The item we have before us tonight is Aggieville Tax Increment Financing, known as TIF, Timeline and Projections. And that will be presented by Jason.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Just to give you a quick overview of tax increment financing. It's a process by which the city moves to establish a district. We usually create a boundary around both public and private property in order to capture that future valuation increase on both commercial, residential, industrial-type properties. We use that growth over time. Twenty years typically is what a TIF is set up for, to pay TIF-eligible costs. In our education purposes, we just kind of threw out all definitions for how that money would be used. In Manhattan for Aggieville, we're primarily talking about public infrastructure only. We're talking about streets, sidewalks, alleys, parks, lighting, parking facilities. Have we used TIF in town to purchase land and work with site development? Yes. That is not what we anticipate doing in Aggieville. These funds are targeted and have been forecasted really to address our public needs. Yes, a lot of private properties generate that increment, but it's a capturing by the city through the county that then allows us to reinvest in that district. I just want to make sure we're clear. TIF funds will not go towards private developers in our vision. They haven't gone towards them in the past in Aggieville. And for the most part, what we're seeing forecast-wise, our public improvements is where the lion's share of TIF will go. There could be some use of TIF for land assembly, but again, it's not something we have targeted right now in our vision.
What is land assembly?
Buying land.
Yeah, I know. Oh, purchase.
Yeah.
Okay. Not, I would have called, I would have interpreted land assembly as putting several lots together in order to have a big, so, but you'd have to purchase it to get that, right?
You would.
Or long-term lease or what?
Yeah, TIF, I mean downtown's really the example we can draw on. You know, at one time, the city owned the entire North End. And then we sold it back to a developer. That's the type of land assembly, purchase.
Oak land? I just wasn't familiar with the term. Okay, thanks.
Yep. As I mentioned, the communities used TIF a couple of different times. Manhattan Town Center back in the eighties was established. We, in 2005, put the TIF in place for both the North and South of Manhattan Town Center. And they're typically areas, much like we've talked about with our comprehensive economic development policy. Where do you want to see investment made? You know, as we talk about CID's and we talk about TIF, we're typically coming back to these areas in which the community has invested in in the past, and we would anticipate they invest in the future. You also have to look for areas where there's a lot of public infrastructure. And Aggieville and downtown have a lot of streets, have a lot of public sidewalks, have a lot of public parking lots and alleyways that serve those areas of our community. In very general terms, tax increment financing is about, as you see on the left side of that graph, the appraised value increasing. The creation, on the bottom side of the graph, talks about freezing a base. And that base property value under TIF runs the full 20 years to the termination of that district life, through time. That increment that's generated over that 20-year period is captured and pledged towards those public improvements. As you can see, the trend line is anticipated to increase over time and keep increasing once the termination of the district has taken place. We have some great examples in the community. In '05, the base valuation of the North and South redevelopment areas appraised at around $16 million. At an assessed value of just over 3.4. And at the time, it was generating about $353,000 on an annual basis. Based on 2017's valuation, it has grown significantly. It's gone from 86 million, from 16 million to 87 million. It's gone in assessed value from 3.4 to 16.4. And the taxes being generated are over $2 million annually. That TIF fund generates roughly $1.6 million a year, and it keeps accumulating and helping pay for all those public improvements we took on with the downtown redevelopment. So under Kansas statutes, there are eligible areas for tax increment finance districts to be established. We highlight the enterprise zone in red there, just to highlight that Aggieville is a area where the enterprise zone is located. It was established prior to 1992. But there are other definitions within the TIF law in which you can pursue a district. We are relying on the enterprise zone. You have a map in front of you, a map on the screen that kind of identifies where that enterprise zone was established and, again, makes it eligible for a tax increment finance zone. Clearly, at one point in the community's history, it looked at its old Ward districts and the industrial area at the time, which is now a lot more retail along McCall and Highway 24, as areas in which they felt like future development and future investment would be necessary to sustain them. Aggieville, this is a zoning map. It kind of gives you an indication of where the C3 in red is located, primarily between 11th Street, Blument, Anderson, 14th, Fremont on the south, but Laramie cutting through the bottom core of the project area. We have RM along Fremont. We have some R3 that surrounds with an MPRO overlay just to the east. So this map is very important as we move through the rest of the presentation. When we have talked with our consultants and even the community about Aggieville, it's mainly been this area surrounded by red. It is where the C3 zoning has occurred, Fremont being that southern boundary we are referring on many occasions. But we have talked about this possible addition coming over to 10th Street and incorporating these three blocks between Fremont and Blument on 10th to include in the TIF district for a couple of different reasons. One being, there's opportunity here. If you drive through those three blocks, there are clearly a number of single-family homes that are being used for rentals. There have been some parcels, and you can kind of see the larger ones, that have been assembled and larger developments have occurred. Duplexes, just multifamily units have been put in there. But there are still a number of single-family 50-by-150 lots that hold potential for assembly and residential high-density housing being constructed. If they're included in the TIF, it gives the TIF more revenue, and it also gives Aggieville red district an opportunity to point towards an area, both to the east and to the north, where zoning is set up for high-density housing. We can't go north, because we talked about this at one time. With the enterprise zone, the map stops at Blument, so we can't extend the TIF to the north. Had the enterprise zone went north, I think you would see a proposal for that TIF boundary to also go north. Instead of going north, the alternative, go east and look to that residential area as the buffer between further neighborhoods to the east and Aggieville itself. Eric Cutel and Chad Bungier and I have had conversations. We are starting to, and really, from a comprehensive plan standpoint, we're not talking about a different land use. We're talking about high-density, multifamily type of residential fitting within that area. But we'll come up with a description for the potential assembly of property and creating a product that's different than the single-family that exists there today.
A quick question on that. And sorry, my voice is kind of losing it. You may only know this from anecdotal evidence in past history, but I would, in that proposed addition, I would assume that those property values are, at least land-wise, are quite high, because it's adjacent to Aggieville. But would there be any concern that us adding the TIF district would artificially raise the value of those prices more? Because now, not only do they know that maybe private developers are eyeing it, but the city also has an interest in this being developed as well. And then by doing that, we kind of mitigate, or potentially mitigate, the opportunity for a private investment to go. Do you understand the question I'm trying to ask?
I think I do, Jared. And what comes to mind immediately is the UCR to the north, where we've actually relaxed regs even more to try to encourage that high density. We haven't seen a lot of activity there, nor have we really seen a whole lot of resale. I think the resale of property, or the sale of property, will really be the indicator that drives those prices. Our history and our experience, especially with downtown, it was us assembling property with block by block that was driving prices. It wasn't necessarily the district going in and being in place, it was the actual purchase.
Got it.
And the sale of property. Because then the county starts reacting. And Aggieville has that history. You know, when we sold the lot to the hotel to put in, assembled all three of these parcels, we realized through appraisers that land was over $50 a square foot. And a lot of it had to do with what happened across the street with land assembly for that Blument hotel. So land assembly has historically been what's driven those prices.
Yeah. I just, I want to see density grow there as well. So I just wanted to make sure us adding them into a district historically didn't artificially raise prices. So, thank you.
Yep.
Would the inclusion of the possible expansion area preclude, let's say, somebody wants Blument, on Blument? We have had some success with transportation districts. Would this preclude us from doing a TDD there where the sales tax would generate and pay? Could we, could we do a TDD in a TIF area? Okay.
We do that downtown today.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Good.
The IRBs with tax abatements are pretty much what you're limited not to do within a TIF.
Okay.
Because you're talking about taking that incremental property tax value away and abating it, and they're just, they're just simply not allowed.
Okay.
But CID's, TDD's, benefit districts, all allowed within a TIF.
Thank you.
So the next couple of slides are really about process. The boundary itself requires, the commission really set a public hearing, so that's done by resolution, and then you adopt an ordinance for that boundary. The hearing is no less than 30, but no more than 70 after that resolution's passed, setting that date for the public hearing. We notice all the owners and the tenants in the boundary area for their proposed district. And we also have just a general plan that goes out with that description, a description of the plan that goes out with that notice. Now, the hearing is then conducted, and first reading of an ordinance is considered. After that is the 30-day window for both the school district and the county to consider the establishment of that district, and they do have veto power. It doesn't require them to take action. They don't have to affirm anything. They can simply take the matter under advisement. They don't have to vote in favor, but they do have the ability to vote against it and being part of it. And Ron has been through that process more than I have. Prior to my arrival in the manager's office, there were other attempts for TIF districts where it actually was vetoed by both the county on one occasion and the school district on another. It just wasn't well-received. The timing, the developer, the proposal, it all, it all happened fairly quick, and it really sparked us to have more of a formal process downtown and dive into how the community would like to see things transpire and build that momentum. A lot of which we've done in Aggieville over the last three years. Our own Aggieville visioning process, and then the last two phases with Olson, looking at public infrastructure and identifying how we would actually use these revenue sources. So we anticipate some presentations with them during that 30-day window. Like Bullet says, if they take no action in that 30-day window, or if they don't veto that establishment of that boundary and that district, we will proceed with second reading. And then once established, that base valuation is set, and as new projects come on and increase in valuation occurs, we can capture that for that 20-year period. The next step is a redevelopment plan. So once that boundary's established, you can adopt one or more redevelopment plans, but there's a list of the items that are necessary to include. Looking at that list, I believe we have all that information pretty much ready, based on Phase 1 and Phase 2 with our interaction with Olson. Again, since we're not heavily involved with any private property, it doesn't, it won't require us to divulge any of that. And it's a, it's a big piece of most TIF plans that we simply won't, won't have to dive into in great detail. The plan must go to the planning board, and their charge is to review it and make sure it's consistent with our comp plan. And I believe, Eric, we did adopt the Aggieville vision as part of the comp plan, so we're set up pretty well for that review. And then we'll have to talk with them about that additional block. But again, the description there, we don't anticipate being any different than the current zoning. If yes from the planning board, we come back to the commission. And again, we go through that public hearing process where we pass a resolution, we wait 30 to 70 days, we notice everybody in the, in the district, and we notice our governing bodies, the school district and the county. But in this case, they don't have any veto once we get to the plan phase. The only veto power that the district, the school district and the county have is when we establish the district boundary. So we'll set that hearing, we'll host it, we'll pass an ordinance. This time, the redevelopment plan needs 2/3 of the commission's concurrence. So four of you would have to vote as a supermajority in favor of that plan. Just a reiteration, no protest period, no veto period. And if adopted, that is when the 20-year clock actually starts. So there's a period of time where you could actually be generating revenue before you actually adopt a plan. Bond counsel usually likes to see that plan come within six months, nine months of the boundary. But like I said, we have a lot of that information, and we feel as soon as that boundary is established, we can turn right around and come back with a plan. So our tentative timeline does just that. Here we are this evening discussing those options. We would like to consider the resolution on February 5th to create that boundary. We would then send notices to the district. We would host that public hearing on March 19th and consider first reading. After the 19th, we would then provide notice to Riley County and USD 383 of their 30-day window. And more than likely, administration would be at both of their chambers, providing an overview and a presentation of the district and the descriptions of the project and financing, and providing them an opportunity to ask us questions about the impacts of this in the future. If we survive that 30-day veto period, we'll be back on May 7th for second reading and adoption of a TIF ordinance. Soon thereafter, we would start that redevelopment plan process, probably early summer of 19. So, over the past year, we've hired two consultants to assist us with TIF forecasting. Dave Darcy has a history with the city in sizing and actually selling TIF and star bonds. Dave worked for a company known as RERC, Real Estate Research Consultants, in the mid-2000s. And the state of Kansas actually worked with him at The Legends in RERC in Kansas City when they were sizing the bonds for Village West. And he also assisted us in our sizing of our star and TIF bonds. We contacted Dave more recently. I'll give him a little more history. We hired GAI to help us with our forecasting with North Campus Corridor, with the private and public growth anticipated with MBAF, with K-State's research foundation and the university. They assisted with that forecasting as well. So Dave's been familiar with Manhattan for well over a decade, and we asked him to look at Aggieville and provide us with some projections. Dave has a history of a low and a moderate and a high scenario, and that's exactly what he did. He looked at a lot of data surrounding the existing TIF district. They start going down the path of looking at our mill levy, they look at how property is valued in Kansas and obviously in Manhattan and Aggieville. Based on the appraised value of $61 million, it has an assessed value of $11.6 million. In Kansas, you get from appraised to assessed by taking at times that assessed value for commercial and assessed value percentage for residential. If you just went straight 11% on 61 million, you'd probably have a valuation of around 7. If you went straight commercial on a quarter of 61 million, you know, you're going to be closer to 12, 13 million. So we're, we've got both. We've got some residential, and we've got some commercial. Probably more heavy in commercial with valuation in Aggieville. If we're looking at what mill rate of the 145 that exists that'll actually generate increment in the future, it's 30 less mills. There's 20 mills of the school district's value, mill levy rate that has to be excluded. It's state of Kansas revenue that they collect from every district and every property in Kansas. It's separate than the money that comes, that stays local, and it goes to the state of Kansas. And those 20 mills are exempt from tax increment finance districts. It's the same methodology we had downtown, both with the school, with the Manhattan Town Center and our North and South. In addition, there's 1.5 mills that goes to the state of Kansas directly that is also exempt. There's also capital outlay with the school district that is exempt. Altogether, those total 30 mills. So the 145 drops down to the 115.5. Based on that assessed valuation, based on the reduction in the mills, total property tax generated for Aggieville today is around $1.3 million. And that would be considered our base. And if you go back to that chart with the trend line and the triangle, that base that you see in that chart would be 1.3 million. If you've looked through Dave Darcy's projections, he uses that number for the 2018 value, and then he shows not only the boundary growth, but he also shows development growth, and he adds those together in order to generate his estimates. The red boundary, he developed three scenarios. Then he added the blue boundary in the event we want to add that expansion area to give us a total that ranges between 15.2 million and 20.5 million over that 20-year life of the tax increment finance district. It's very important to understand how he got those and his forecast. And if you read through some of those pages in the back, like 28, page 29, and page 30, he talks about his conservative nature, and we want him to be conservative with these estimates. We were just talking with bond counsel yesterday about TIF and about process moving forward, and I was commenting to Joe Norton, who's down Wichita, and I said, our B-bonds up north on our redevelopment effort downtown, we have subordinate bonds. It's a bond that captures growth within a given year that's in excess of what we owe in principal and interest. And it funnels through a funding mechanism that we get a share, the developer gets a share, and then a reserve fund gets a share. We have realized more money through our B-bonds than we anticipated. When we went downtown to Points Avenue and constructed that $2.5 to $3 million improvement that included points from 3rd to 5th, and include 3rd Street and 4th Street to Houston and to Humboldt, we assessed that district at a 95-5 benefit district. City was 95, owners were five. At the time, we had a forecast for the B-bonds. It was fairly conservative, probably made Bernie a little nervous with our ideas, but we wanted to use B-bond proceeds to help us pay for Points Avenue instead of going to bond and interest and raising the property taxes. Well, that would have required our TIF district downtown to do well. And from a property tax standpoint, it has done well. It's done really well. It's not only done what property taxes were anticipated to do, it's made up for what sales tax are not doing. It has been very successful, and I believe just recently Bernie and Rena provided us information that we're likely to pay off Points Avenue early. And we have enough revenue accumulated to pay that debt. It's a great story. I asked Joe on the phone, could we possibly do something similar in Aggieville? And he said, absolutely. And it makes a lot of sense. You have two opportunities with bonds. You can supersink them and use all that interest to pay off principal, much like you might do with your own mortgage. If you want to throw an extra $500 or $700 towards your mortgage, it'll buy down your principal. But there's a lot of debt tools out there that like to see the consistent revenues. So any increment, any generation of additional revenues, they'll just set aside, and they'll use it in the last year of funding to pay off the debt. They don't buy down your principal. Well, with B-bonds, we actually get to use that for a different purpose. If it generates more revenue, we'll actually be able to generate additional project costs that we can cover. So with these revenues, we approached Springstead to take these scenarios and size bonds accordingly at different rates. And this 3.4 and 4.2, it's a, it's a combination of rates. If you looked at those pages, I think there's five different references to our rate in which you can finance these debts. The TIF red alone at a lower interest rate will generate and yield 10.7 million in project costs under the structure that they have formulated for the TIF. If the interest rate rises and our bonds are bought at a higher rate, it'll reduce our proceeds by over a million dollars. So when we get to market with TIF bonds for Aggieville, it'll be significant in terms, no different than when you go finance your home, and you're looking at mortgage rates. As they drop, you can save money if you refi. And this is an opportunity for us to go to the market and see what kind of an interest rate we'll receive. If we add the red and the blue, you can see we're almost a million or a million and a half better by way of project proceeds that come out of this scenario. And those numbers are based on those scenarios, mainly the moderate scenario. And the moderate is, as even Dave describes, very likely to occur given our history. I want to make sure we take advantage of the high scenario in the event it happens. And I think that's, it's a future conversation, but I just wanted you to recognize there are opportunities to possibly capture more revenues down the road with this structure. So with those totals, anywhere from 9.6 to 11.6, then we start talking about what we've identified in Aggieville that would qualify for the use of TIF funds. And we're about 1/3 of that total. So we've got some tough decisions and some challenges ahead. So we've got some tough decisions and some challenges ahead. We can come out of the gate and issue a bond, and one scenario is to tackle that garage. You're going to have another 20 million worth of electrical, public Wi-Fi, roads, utility, streetscape, and amenities in our landscaping that are around that $20 million mark. Total Olson projected, anywhere from $23 to $30 million. I just wanted to make sure we tied that back. Clearly, we've gone out with a lot of public process, had a lot of opinions, a lot of desires, but at some point, you do have to talk about paying for it. And TIF has been referenced a lot, but what we're seeing by way of projection and revenues and bond sizings, TIF can cover about a third of what we've all liked to see in Aggieville. That's the presentation this evening. Open it up for comments and questions. Really do, based on our history with those types of consultants making those forecasts, they've been pretty accurate, but we've also set up mechanisms to take advantage in the event our projects do better than what they anticipate. With that, be happy to answer any questions this evening.
What's the average bond selling on the market right now for? What's the average interest rate?
These would not be like general obligation bonds like we go out to sell, which is, we talked about last time, anywhere from 2.5 to 3%. These would be bonds much like a taxable rate, or in this case, we actually would hire an underwriter, and they'd go out to the market and find a buyer. And they will float several different deals until we're ready to lock in with a potential buyer on a certain day.
That makes sense, okay.
There's a lot of education that comes with the sale of these bonds. They become intimately familiar with the details surrounding Dave Darcy's report, Springstead's report, our own report. The offering statements for downtown were that thick per bond, and those OSs are something that finance staff, our office assist, both our financial advisors, bond counsel, and underwriter assemble. And that underwriter really takes that role to assemble all that information and put that offering statement out. And then they sell it. They go out and market it and sell it to companies and individuals.
Can you just maybe walk through something for everybody's information here? Just take the moderate scenario of red and blue. So you've got a total revenue under that curve of seven, almost $18 million. And then you show red and blue, let's take the 3.4 of 11.6. So what's the relationship between 11.6 and the 17.8?
Yep. And a lot of that detail is in those Springstead documents. So the packet this evening included...
I think the chart is, there's a chart in there, 5.4 or something on page 33. So...
This debt scenario, which I'll back up, it netted us out.
What I'm trying to get at here is, when you go out and bond, you've got to pay a certain amount of that in debt payments. And, you know, when we did the school, the activity centers on the schools, we did this in such a manner, we collect first and then pay. So you averge this somewhere around maybe 27 to 32% debt payment of your principal. So in this case, when you start out with 18 million of expected revenue over that life of that TIF, then your 11.4, which is your bond proceed. So what is it you're buying? In other words, when I go out and I've got 17, I'm buying over that life of that thing, I'm buying $18 million worth of something.
Yep. And it's really about your principal and your interest, Mayor. This 11.8 in principal shows you what you generate over that 20-year period just on the principal. So by bonding immediately and forecasting revenue over the next 20 years, you end up spending $6.4 million in interest. So that's what reduces your moderate scenario from your 17.5 million dollars down to 11 in proceeds, because you've got a budget for 6 million in interest. And it's something that we do all the time. We don't get into a whole lot of detail when we talk to you all about taking that $5.5 million West Anderson project and bonding it for 10 or 15 years, but we do, because we talk to you about, okay, here's your annual impact. This is what it's going to cost in bond and interest every year for the next 10 or 15 years, and this is what it'll take for a mill levy to support it. But we like to talk to you in terms of principal, in terms of what we'll pay the contractor. But what we end up financing through bond and interest includes both principal and interest. So when we talk to you all about using $11 million down in Aggieville, we'll have to use all, every bit of the $18 million projected to cover that bond.
Well, that's one of the reasons the use of red and blue and the difference between 3.4 and 4.2 makes a difference.
It does.
Because, I mean, there's $2 million in there that you wouldn't have otherwise. And I assume, when he was doing this, that's one of the reasons that he argued to include the blue, so you have a little bit more revenue to apply to the project.
You do. And if you wanted to take the same strategy you took with the middle schools in Seco Park, you could wait seven years after you established the district and put the garage in. The negative to a TIF is investing in that garage may actually, and we would argue, will spur growth, spurs a growth opportunity. So by investing nine or 10 million in a garage, the hope and the vision is truly for more properties to sink dollars into that district to take advantage of that inventory of parking. And he talks about that in his report, and that's what gives him some of that incremental growth every year, is people reacting to our investment in that parking garage.
That was, I guess, part of the comment, too. I mean, if, at the end here, when you're looking at $23 to $30 million, and you say, well, what should we do first? And if part of the revenue is predicated on the parking garage versus utilities or the streetscape, then you would have another set of figures if you didn't put the garage in first in order to stimulate that growth. Is that fair to say?
It is a big reason why tax increment finance can be successful. If you allow that future growth to be invested initially, typically, public investment is matched by private investment. Where we're fortunate today is we have two projects that are on the horizon that will impact our tax increment finance district tremendously. The hotel, and we've talked about this a little bit, going from a piece of property that's worth under $1 million combined to over $8 million after construction, will generate a quarter of $1 million a year in that annual revenue stream. And you can see, he doesn't have a whole lot of revenue being counted on. This capitalized interest will actually cover these first three or four years' payments. So the hotel will actually generate more revenue than he's ever anticipating in those first three years, and then we've got a head start. And then you talk about the property at 14th and Laramie that's been attempting to revitalize itself. Those houses have been removed. We're going to be the benefactors of January 1 of 2019 of that property having a value with no structure on it. And as soon as the structure's on top of it, all of it will be incremental growth. So the impetus to invest in the district through these funds early that will help sustain that growth model is exactly what you want. To wait to the end because of accumulated revenues, you're taking a huge risk. It's apples and oranges compared to passing a sales tax and doing our middle school improvements and our Seco improvements. It's really about give that district every advantage you can possibly give it for those first five to 10 years, so you can leverage the type of incremental revenue they're forecasting.
And I guess the, kind of the last one, get some more questions, comments here, but for me, let's say we spend 11 million and we have an estimate of 23 to 30, so how do we fix the rest? And that's obviously the future, but we've got, if we've got those requirements as a part of this package, we've got to think through that, too.
I think we've started down that path with the Chamber and Region Reimagine, and creating that quality sense of place. Aggieville has become part of that conversation, but so has North Campus Corridor. You know, we've got two opportunities to talk about future revenue streams that could help us. There's the renewal with the ED tax, that if we go city, we've got an opportunity to generate more revenue, and we can invest back in the community on projects such as this, that we clearly see a return down the road. And then, just as Bernie forecasted a little bit today, you know, that we're going to get into a conversation about where does future revenue come from? And look at how we generate revenue today, and how can we generate revenue in the future? When you talk about projects like the levy, the runway out at the airport, the North Campus Corridor, Aggieville, Senrec, Conference Center, I mean, you start adding up, that is just what we've been studying the last three to five years. What comes out of Region Reimagine, what comes out of the future by way of other areas of the community that we'd like to see enhancements? You've got a Seth Child Corridor study that we're about ready to adopt. You've got other areas of the community that are ripe, a lot of conversations happening, you know, near the river. I mean, there's just a lot of ideas and a lot of concepts in order to make this place, this Manhattan, a desired place to live and locate a business and raise a family. We've done a great job, and we need to continue to have that vision and put things in place that keep Manhattan attractive.
I just, I have one question, one more question, and I'll save my comments until after public comment, but we're talking, when you're talking about investing in the things up front that are going to spur development, so that we can leverage that for the next 20 years, do we have anything other than anecdotal evidence that a parking garage is the thing that's going to spur that investment? Like, when I think about districts like Old Town and Power and Light and even Westport, I mean, when those cities put and invested money into those districts, did the investment start with them providing additional parking, or did it start with them providing additional amenities? Like, I guess we, as a commission, have to decide which one of those things, but I'm just wondering, is there any actual evidence that supports one or the other?
Some of our feedback in our committee with Aggieville got into this topic, because it was like, where do you go first? And even with the Chin property at 14th and Laramie, we got backlash from the district. Why? Because of parking. If the resource can be put within the district, then it opens up conversations for Moro, opens up conversations for 12th Street, Laramie. Because the on-street parking is such a valuable resource. Aggieville has lived with about 550 to 600 stalls as an inventory for parking for a long time. And those uses have, you know, at times maximized those. Our survey data showed noon hours, I think even on Thursdays, were extremely high, like over 85, 90% use. If we create the inventory with a garage, it then starts opening up conversations about how to address the rest of the public infrastructure in the district. And it gives the district a resource to use that then opens up conversation. We don't put the garage in place. Resistance is going to be there at every turn.
But the resistance, in all fairness, resistance is from the business community. Like, I think about what we're doing at the airport parking garage, right? Where we put in a lot of time trying to figure out how, if we did paid parking, how that would change people's behavior. Do we actually have any evidence that says if we don't increase parking in Aggieville, that people's behavior is going to change? Not based on what the business community assumption is, based on the people who frequent Aggieville?
Yeah, I think the only evidence we can supply is what other communities have had to do by way of Haymarket, by way of Power and Light. You know, you create the inventory so it can support the business around.
And that was, that's what those districts did first, invested in parking first.
It was definitely part of their planning, because they recognized they couldn't put all that amenity without giving people a place to go.
I agree. I guess a place that I'm having trouble with, in a perfect world, I want a parking garage too, because I think that you're right. It does, without a parking garage, the conversation about Moro never opens up. But I also don't have a ton of confidence that future commissions are going to be able to come up with another $20 million to fund these additional projects. So when I look at $10 million for a TIF, it looks like one of these things is going to get done. And so, yeah, I'd love a parking garage too, but which one of these things is going to spur growth in the beginning? So that's why I was asking those questions.
It's a good question, and it is something that the community wrestles with, even the district wrestles with. Whether it's perception or reality, parking is a barrier in Aggieville. And I'm not suggesting I know the answer, whether it's perception or reality, but there are definitely views out there that it is a problem. There are views out there that, how can it be a problem? There's 500 or 600 stalls. When I go, I find a stall. But it is about that future decision-making of those investors in that district, and the approach of bringing a resource that will check off a box and make parking a non-issue so that investment can move forward.
I would just offer that I think the garage is more about the future than it is the current situation. Even though we have a lot of support for a need for parking now, if you look at the, if you recall the vision and the increased density around the perimeter, that density has to have its, either its own parking structure support privately or other public structure support to create that density, ideally within that timeframe that you're working towards. That's going to create additional revenue in that increment. The other aspect is, I think, to get to some of the on-street amenities and infrastructure, we have to look at some of the more traditional sources. So like downtown, we did the benefit district, and we did the city picked up the bulk of that with B-bonds. Again, that B-bond's anticipating you're going to have other investment and increased valuation in that particular district. So that isn't something we've really factored into this formula, that we need to get you that kind of information about what those options are, whether you want to add TDD, CID, all the things Commissioner Morris was asking about. You could build into it to fund some of the more traditional amenities.
My only word of caution on CID's and TDD's, you've got to get the owners to go with you. And if they're not willing to raise their own sales tax rates, then we can't impose them. So just anecdotal information.
Jason, I have a couple of questions, and we can open it up for comments also. I have similar concerns as Commissioner McKee, and I think I voiced them earlier also. I don't think garage is going to be the fix-it for everything. But one of the things I noticed in some of the descriptions that were provided by the consultants was, and talking to other community members, is a need for more office space and incubators of sorts within that business district, so it does develop into not just a bar area, but that's where people want to go and also work and set up businesses and do all of that. So if we move forward with this as a TIF district and go for public hearing, does the city have a say in what type of facilities go in that TIF district area?
Well, there are zoning regs that you'll be considering with C3 text changes in the near future. Staff has been talking with Aggieville businesses and owners about those text changes. Some of them have to do with facades, some of them have to do with parking regulations, land uses. To go to the extreme of suggesting every building permit would have to be vetted?
No, I don't mean that.
No, but...
Yeah, I just meant like a certain percentage should be office space, because I think there needs to be office spaces there. There's a lot here for apartments... There's a lot here for apartments, retail, the One Hotel, and hardly anything about office spaces. And I keep hearing that over and over and over from K-State and everybody else.
So one of the Region Reimagine groups talks about innovation and entrepreneurship. And those innovation districts that you're seeing throughout the country where people are coming together by way of incubator, by way of business development, and they're locating in areas where a lot of the amenities that are in Aggieville today, they want to be near. So places to eat, places to get coffee, places to grab some donuts, lunch, dinner, after-work, entertainment. And we experienced that when we went up to Lincoln and the Haymarket. Huddles National Headquarters are in the Haymarket, right next to a city-built parking garage, but right next to a redevelopment area that has all those other amenities. So that office will...
You think it'll just happen on its own?
It'll draw to that. It'll draw to that because, right, because people want to be near those innovation districts.
I just don't want to take a chance on that. I'd like to see a certain percentage, think about, I don't know how to put it in there, but I think that's something that I constantly hear. I hear from Aggieville's side also, but I hear from all the other entities that feel like this is where businesses also need to set up, not for retail so much, but as incubator.
Even when we engaged with Olson and Andrew Vador with Walker Parking assisted us with a plan for parking, they included office as part of that. I mean, I think they even recognized this is going to be a melting pot for commercial residential office. Aggieville already has a brand that is well-known throughout the state. And the opportunity that we're seeing in Aggieville, being expressed, the energy, it fits a lot of those innovation district definitions. And it doesn't require us to go attract all that retail and places to eat. It's set up, and even the vision that we had playing on video, the density that you see on Blue Mont and Laramie with the four and five-story buildings creates such an opportunity for all those different uses, those different land uses to come in. And what we hope to see is developers who are willing to look at the ground-floor retail, that second and third floor office, and then that fourth and fifth floor residential, just to create that vibrancy in that district.
Yeah, you know, my comment on this is, of course, I think that the TIF's a good idea, and then you've got four or five things here you've got to prioritize. I think everybody's leaning towards parking garage as that being the catalyst for development. And as far as the commission deciding what's in there, it's Zone C3, so people can build what they want, right? Pretty much. And so I disagree with, you know, government deciding what goes in there. You know, the business owners will figure out what goes in there and what makes money. And if it turns out to be office space, then so be it. If it turns out to be another bar, so be it. But that's where I'm at on this. We just provide, you know, the TIF district gives us the catalyst. We're betting that the parking garage is going to cause increased development, and then that increased development will change the curve on your chart. And we'll end up with more money and then we can take care of Morrow and everything else. That's what the bet is, long-term, the way I see it.
Our trips to Ames, our trips to Fayetteville, our trips to Columbia, I know a lot of folks like to tout, that's where we came up the idea for the sales tax for the quality of life, improvements for indoor and outdoor recreation, but this is also something we saw a lot of in those communities, a reinvestment in a commercial district near their campuses where that energy can be captured and those innovation districts and entrepreneurship can flourish. And I think we're on to something very similar to what we've seen in those other communities.
I'm interested in maybe tightening up the estimate a bit. We have almost $7 million total difference between the, what you call, the low interest, low and high. Is there some way, it's a range of 23.3 million to 30 million, which is close to seven?
Oh, on the Aggie...
On the total?
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's the parking garage, there's almost 3 million there, the roads and utilities, almost 3. But that's quite a swing.
Yep, and a lot of that has to do with just our preferences for exterior finishes, the level of landscaping, streetscape, lighting. You can spend a lot of money in a hurry, in a block, and a lot of this will determine, will be determined on what level of finishes we, as an organization, want to invest.
But it also, if we set our TIF district to raise the 30 million, we'll spend the 30 million?
We can't set that, Commissioner. It's a product of the evolution of the district.
Right.
We can't, like, put a rate in there and generate a certain amount of revenue. We generate whatever we generate based on the growth in the project area. It's not a matter of adjusting a mill levy. It's a matter of the investment coming and those valuations increasing because of that investment.
I was thinking about this interpret, forecasting of low, moderate, and high. And 30 seems to me to be the high, and 23 would be the low, so...
So those are Olson estimates based on what they've designed so far. Those are the estimates of the actual expenses for roads, sidewalks, alleys, and all the improvements that we anticipate making in Aggieville. So, you know, if all you did was the garage, you'd only spend about $10 million. If you start getting into streetscape and you start getting into the alleys and want to make those improvements, these are just estimates that provide you a frame of reference for making those improvements. These will change. These will be under the control of the governing body to make those decisions, how much to invest in these facilities.
Thank you.
Okay, let's call for a public comment. I know there are people here with interest in this. And if you will, just come forward and state your name, where you live, and I think we've got a book up there where you can write that down, and then we've got a five-minute time limit with a 30-second warning. So anyone that has a comment, please come on up.
Turner Armbriss, Director of Economic Development, went to address Commissioner Reddy's conversation about the office space. The Chen property is an example of one where a developer was looking at a three-story building, and after conversations, it's now a four-story building. And so part of our job, part of the community's job, is to explain the vision of Aggieville, explain what an innovation district is so developers are thinking about that, and that's how you get additional office space. Also, just wanted to relate to you, that met with an individual last week who was representing investors from Kansas City, and they were interested in Manhattan, and specifically they had heard about the Aggieville project, but they wanted additional information. And out of that conversation came an interest in learning more about what the demands are, what the opportunities are, more about the innovation district that tie to Kansas State University, and their thoughts of putting up a commercial building in Aggieville as well. So I think a lot of the conversation as we go forward and we explain that vision and that parking garage goes in there, that was, to them, was also a catalyst project, a catalyst piece of this, is having that parking garage made them very interested in Aggieville because they want to see that public investment that will help their investment pay off long-term. So just want to relay those conversations to you and how that office piece will come into play.
Good. Thanks, Ryan.
So we are 100, the Aggieville Business Association and the district is 100%, well, 95% behind this, like I said last time when we talked about this. I strongly believe, and I had somebody just today when I was walking around one of the surveys for the city on the UDO, that was the first thing out of their mouth was, are we going to get the parking garage? So that is huge for us down there. I know some people don't think that there's a huge parking issue down there, but when you're down there seven days a week, you see it. Right now, a lot of people are gone, so it's not. But once we get into the warmer months, we're going to see more and more of this issue pop up. So I just want to let you guys know we're very in favor of this TIF district. Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Is that thing set for five minutes or what's it doing?
Have reset.
Huh?
Have reset.
Okay. I was watching my watch on that thing. Anyone else? All right, we'll come back to Commissioner. Any further comments, any guidance we wish to give to Jason and staff?
I think the main guidance you're looking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, for tonight is if we support the red and blue, correct? You know, you don't need to know what we want to spend money on first yet, right? Thank the Lord. Because I need to think about that.
Yeah, feedback on the boundary would be perfect, and then just if this timeline fits your needs.
Yes, so yes on both of those things. Timeline seems fine to me. I am supportive of adding the blue district. I think it makes sense, and you answered really the only one question that I had about it. As a general comment, as we come back and look at this more, I knew we wouldn't get the full amount of funding from the TIF district for everything that we wanted. I didn't quite realize how stark of a difference it was going to be. I don't remember, maybe it went over my head, but I don't remember a third of it was only going to come from the TIF district. And when I talk to people about what they're excited about with this Aggieville vision, I don't hear a parking garage. It's a nice-to-have, but that's not what makes people, at least, I'm speaking to citizens at large excited about this Aggieville vision. And so I have real hesitation in putting the entire TIF money into that parking garage first without some more, I don't know, I don't know even what evidence that I'm looking for, but right now, we're putting a lot of weight on the fact that a parking garage is going to spur additional investment. And I don't know if it's something that you could come up with the Chamber or a study that's been done elsewhere, or show me an example of how it was done in Old Town and Power and Light to make me feel better about this. Because what I'm scared is, we vote to fund that parking garage, it doesn't spur the investment because we didn't have money to put additional amenities into Aggieville, didn't spur additional development, and I have to drive down by that parking garage for the next 20 or 30 years of my life and feel like I missed a major opportunity. And that's what worries me. I could understand on a kind of, I don't know, it is very hard, in my mind right now, it's very hard to convince me that the parking garage is a bigger necessity for investment than investment in amenities and streetscape is to drive additional businesses and people to go down there. So I guess just note that as a concern in your head from me as we move forward. That's, yeah, that's my hangup.
And Jared, I appreciate it. I really do. It is, it's on our minds, too. The reality that we've seen, and since I've started at the city, a parking garage in Aggieville has been in the CIP for over 20 years.
We don't need to argue this out. Let's just...
We don't, but I just...
Just kick it on board and see what we can get.
My general, my general just statement is, I'm not against a parking garage. I would love to have a parking garage there. I want to know what's going to change people's behaviors and drive investment. That's all I care about. So if there's a way that, either through Chamber or just examples of what other cities have done, we could illustrate that in some way, one way or the other, I'd be very appreciative of that. Otherwise, I'm supportive of what was presented tonight.
Yeah, I think you should go ahead and expand the boundaries, why not? I don't see any harm in that. And, you know, we should go ahead with your timeline on the TIF. And, you know, later on, we can argue the priorities of how that money's spent, but, you know, I'm all for supporting the business owners. 95% want a parking garage. It's their property tax, so let them make the decision on how to spend it.
London?
I support, of course, the TIF. I think that seems to be the route that we can take. I also support the expansion of Aggieville to the east. And I say, I mean, I was on the Aggieville Steering Committee, I guess, and it was apparent to me that over all of the years, Aggieville had not grown. And of course, since I said that, they've, we've expanded it a bit to the west, but I'm just saying at the time. And I think we can't just build a wall around Aggieville. And so I'm interested in letting Aggieville be more. Notness, I, you know, I don't know if it, it sounded like you were envisioning residential there in the expanded area, but I could also see an expansion of commercial, as long as it's not orange. It's not a drive-up on Blue Mont. But I, and I'm also eager to settle on design guidelines in Aggieville so that we have some control over the character, that we can continue, you know, the theme that's there instead of anything goes. And I think we have a vision and we have some form, but it's not tight enough to keep some weird things from happening, I guess. I do, and so I support, sure, I support both the red and the blue boundaries. The timeline sounds fine. And I'm also, would not be interested in any impact on City Park. I have to say that every time we talk about Aggieville because it's across the street. I am interested in the boundary of Aggieville being broadened so that it doesn't end in this middle of Laramie anymore, that it goes on down to Fremont. And so that expansion is what we have to have to see this growth. I am not the biggest fan of parking garages. And probably if I hadn't served on the Aggieville Steering Committee, I might not be saying that I would support the construction of it. But it has to be in the right place, and it has to be, I mean, I don't want to live the rest of my life either, driving by something that was a mistake. So I'm just anxious for it to work and be, I'm eager for the electrical and public Wi-Fi. I think the Wi-Fi in Aggieville just makes sense. All the places we go now where the Wi-Fi is public and open just is what, is speaking to the future. So, thanks.
Good, thanks. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm not against the TIF district. I think that's something we need to do. And I have the same concerns about the parking garage and how the money is allocated. I know once we get the, downtown and Aggieville are very different. In downtown, the garage that's there on Port Street is city. The TIF money, I don't think was involved in that, was it? Not in...
Starbonds.
Starbond money. So that was very, it was very different as far as some of those districts. So for the garage here, we're also going to put a fee where whoever parks there is going to have to pay fees on that also. So whatever we collect from the TIF district, I don't want 100% of that to go toward, or 100% of the garage to be financed by just the TIF money collected. If there are also going to be fees of $2 or $5 or $25, whatever it is, that also has to be part of that equation. Of course, the 800 from the hotel is going to go towards that, but that's just pennies when we're talking about $12 million in the size of the garage. So I am not for having the garage totally be financed by TIF money. I think there has to be at least one or two other financing, dedicated finances for that. And I don't think it's, Aggieville, I don't see that as, if we build a garage, other things will happen. When I look at someplace like Westport, I always have to park really far away to get to where I want to be in most places. And it's not a, it's not a big deal, it's not a big bother, and I don't see that still as a concern here. Most of the, some of the businesses that are in Aggieville right now are closed during the day and open in the evenings, so that's their peak time, probably. But if that's their peak time, I don't know how many students are going to want to go park in the garage and pay for that if they're using shared ride, ride-sharing, or whatever else that might be influenced on that. So I want to see more projections in that area. I do think having the streetscape and the infrastructure and the Wi-Fi is... is much more important than the garage itself. I think if you're looking for commercial properties to come there, office space, uh, students, whatever it is you're looking for, to them, Wi-Fi is the infrastructure that they actually need more than the parking garage itself. They go everywhere with their phones, they do everything on their laptops. When you go to a place like, um, Redina's or, uh, Blue St. Bistro or somewhere, they have their stuff, you know, they're working there. And when you want businesses to be there, uh, for office spaces, that's what they're looking for. That's something they can say, oh, it's already built in, we don't have to worry about that. Uh, so one of my questions to you is going to be the $3.5 to $4 million as well as the utilities for $10 million to $13 million. Did that include the blue district, the blue part of it, or was it just the red? That was just the red then, okay. So that's what I was thinking. So, yeah, as far as for the decision process tonight, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the way it's designated areas. Um, how that, how that money is resourced into those areas, I'd like to have a, a lengthier discussion in the future.
Yeah, I'm supportive of both of those, Jason. The, uh, just kind of a gratuitous comment, I think we've got a lot of heavy lifting to do, obviously, in front of us. And once we get some, some more, uh, specific pricing on what those things look like, we'll have a better, uh, idea of how to make a decision on what goes first, what goes second, or maybe we can buy two, I don't know. And then, uh, on the UDO, uh, this will be impactful as well. You know, I, um, just a commercial comment here. When we started this UDO process, what I wanted to have happen is have those be more discretionary. In other words, inside C1, you'd have an A, B, and a C so you can better control what we now have to do with a PUD. Otherwise, the thing is wide open for anybody who wants to come and make a quick buck. And I think, uh, maybe through the UDO or something else, and I, you know, I'm, uh, very supportive of free enterprise, but I also would like to see Aggieville transition into something with a better mix of restaurants, bars, and X, Y, and Z. So whatever we can do to kind of motivate that behavior down there would be positive for me.